I'm here to convene in the meeting of the Board of Education. Would all of you please stand for a moment of silence, a pledge of allegiance. It will be led by Commissioner Power.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have all received the minutes of the meeting of June 28, 2007. I'll entertain a motion, please, to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Are there any questions or corrections about the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item is speakers addressing an agenda item. And we have a few. One?
One.
Oh, okay. We have one. Dr. Bridget Wifling from the Anthony Jordan Health Center.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today about our project. My name's Dr. Bridget Wifling, and I'm working very closely with school number six. I am the new CEO at the Jordan Health Center. We are developing a school health project, which includes dental care and pediatric care. And we're very excited because of school number six's location, you know, directly behind us. We feel that by partnering together, we're going to be able to improve dental care for the children. I had spoken with a nurse, Kathy Spalding, and she gave me an estimate of the fact that there's only 30% of the children at school number six who have a dentist and a pediatrician identified as their own. So we're hoping that this partnership will be able to get more of those children into chronic care for both dental and pediatric health. By getting chronic dental care, which is, you know, your screenings, cleanings, and fillings, you can improve not just long-term outcome as far as your dental hygiene, but also decrease the risk of infection. We're also very excited about our pediatric outcomes because by having our children closely linked with their primary care provider, we feel that this partnership, we can decrease the amount of absences due to illness because we are so close. It will be convenient for parents so that they won't have to miss as much work to help their children to get the health care that they need. And we do believe that we're going to have an influence on outcomes as far as asthma and obesity in children. So we're very excited to do this. It's a win-win situation for everyone, and I'm working with a really great group of people to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the speakers' list. We move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Calla.
Thank you. We missed a perfect attendance last week, and we want to make sure we get it this week. So if you could come up to the podium. Thomas Melton Hardaway, perfect attendance for 13 years in school. Want to read the plaque that says, "The Rochester City School District congratulates Thomas Melton Hardaway for 13 years of perfect attendance in school, from kindergarten through high school. You are a role model of consistency, responsibility, and commitment." Again, congratulations.
Well, I guess I want to thank my mom and my dad for waking me up every morning and making sure I get to school. And all of my teachers at every school that I went to for making me want to come to school, like making school seem fun and a way to get away from problems. So that really helped me in coming. And I want to thank all you board members for presenting me with this award. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the parents stand, please, for a round of applause?
Just to continue, I about 10 days ago attended anti-racism movement. It was held at Spiritus Christi. It was very, very good conversation, and most of the conversation actually revolved around the development of the new African-American Studies Department. So we had a good conversation with that, and I plan on returning to continue that conversation as they get more input from the community relative to that. And we continue with the development of the job description for that position, and we're also engaging additional community involvement with regards to the department and the job description. Also, of course, big news within the last week was the passage of the facilities modernization legislation in Albany. So it's been a long wait, and we're very excited about that as we look forward to improving our facilities over the next few years. The challenges ahead for us are to, for the city and the city school district, to select an implementation board and also to involve the community in the process of identifying the projects that are going to be done. So we're also very pleased that this is finally on the road. The last item I want to talk about is that this evening, the board will appoint several administrators, and we're very proud of our school leaders. So I would like to mention the names of those who are in attendance tonight, and if you would stand and hold your applause to the end, I'd appreciate it. First, Edonia Owens, who will be recommended for the program administrator at School Without Walls. I've heard a lot about you, Edonia, from Dan. Brian Cromarty, being recommended for acting principal at Bioscience and Health Careers at Franklin. Carleen Mirz, who will be assistant director at Edison. Vicky Ramos, who will be the, who is actually doing the job already, principal at Monroe High School. Dejere Matthew, who is being recommended for Wilson Foundation Academy. Dejere and the whole family, huh? And that's who is here tonight, so if you could give them a big round of applause. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now we move on to board reports, and we'll start to my right with Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. The Policy Committee met on Tuesday, July 17, and agreed to forward four items to the Board of Education for the July 19 meeting. These items are included in my committee report and raised as discussion items under new business. A vote on these items can then be taken in August. The Policy Committee recommends that this process, recommends this process because of the timely nature of these policies. Please don't hesitate to contact any of us on the committee or from the staff if you have any questions. These items include Cell Phone Policy 8332. This policy is needed to better administer the distribution of cell phones to district staff. The Code of Ethics 2160. This update is inclusive of the existing conflict of interest policy and the School District Officer and Employee Code of Ethics policy. And Amendment 24350, speaking to multicultural education. This follows up on a recommendation from the Quality Assurance Committee to establish a Department of African and African-American Studies via board policy. Finally, the 2007 Code of Conduct is attached. You have Mr. Looby supporting information, and a public hearing on the proposed Code of Conduct will be scheduled for August and conducted by the Policy Committee. We also had an extremely good discussion about the issue of remediation of lead paint hazards in the schools, and I want to particularly thank Commissioner White and Commissioner Powell and Derek Hazel for what I thought was a lengthy, but really a model discussion or a model example of synthesizing complicated differences about what started out as a very difficult issue and finding so much common ground that almost all of the differences, after everybody had a chance to talk and sort it out, were resolved. And this is an excellent model for how we generally ought to solve problems, and I want to particularly express my appreciation to Commissioner White, Commissioner Powell, and Derek for really leading that discussion. My presence there was really incidental, but it was just an extremely productive discussion, and I wanted to acknowledge that. That will be going to the Audit Committee for a risk assessment and coming back to the Policy Committee, I would anticipate, next month. And that concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Dr. Calla?
Just in addition, what Commissioner Brennan reminded me of something with the lead paint. If you recall, it was in 1999, there was a fairly extensive study of our children at school 17 on lead paint. And I've had several conversations over the last couple of weeks about initiating another study in perhaps a couple of other of our additional schools. So I've actually written a letter and requested some initial information to try to get some baseline information, current information, to see if we are making any progress and what the baseline is right now with regards to that. So we're moving forward on that. So very, very important issue, and it's something that we really have to address. I'm very pleased that the Policy Committee is tackling that. I think the policy that we'll develop will, I believe, is probably going to be the one of the most important school policies on lead in the country.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Are we going to engage in discussion now about the four draft policies?
On the new business.
I didn't see them listed under new business, so that's why. I wasn't sure.
Right. But that's why they will be discussed. The next report, Commissioner Evans.
The Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee did not meet this month, but we will be following up on the apprenticeship program, which board members received in their packet, I think, two Fridays ago, a letter from me and to Dr. Calla, and I think all board members were CC'd in on that. So that will be one of the things we'll be following up on, hopefully, at our August meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Power.
The Finance Committee met on Thursday, the 12th, and recessed and reconvened on Monday, the 17th. We had quite a heavy workload. It includes resolutions 39 through 55, which involve education facilities, technology, procurement and supply, and several contract and lease agreements. All of those resolutions, 39 through 55, are advanced with the endorsement of the Finance Committee. Resolution 60 represents really a hallmark agreement between the city of Rochester and the city school district on five important facilities issues, ranging from the Ryan Center to addressing some of the needs of the school 37, the Congress Avenue facility, and potential purchase of the Maple Dale facility at the Maple Street building. This is an agreement that was hammered out by the administration, which would really is very important that both city council and the school board ratify that agreement, and it sets and renews a precedent about how the city and the school district ought to interact with each other going forward, similar to ratified agreements between the city and the school district in 1972 and in 1986 called the Fiscal Independence Agreements. That really sets the pattern for how we should be interacting with the city hall in a professional and equal footing. So I'm really excited to forward this resolution to you through the Finance Committee. Resolution 61 deals with Lofton, one of the components of that agreement with the city, as do resolutions 62 and 63, which have to do with the Maple Street facility. All of those are recommended by the Finance Committee. I think our next Finance Committee meeting is August 9 at 5:30. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Garcia. The Quality Assurance Committee had to cancel its July meeting. I believe this might be the only time we've had to cancel a QA meeting. We've had to reschedule, but this may be the first cancellation, and I apologize that it was necessary, and thank the staff of the administration for the material they had prepared for that meeting. We're going to meet again on August 13, and our agenda will include but not be limited to a review of the suspension and attendance data and an update on the African and African-American Studies Department. We'll see if we're going to be able to include at least one of the agenda items from the July meeting, and we'll meet at 6:00 PM on August 13. That concludes my report.
Commissioner White.
Thank you, President Garcia. The Audit Committee met on Wednesday, July 18. We discussed the open meetings law, the whistleblower process, the claims audit function, and outstanding invoices from Deloitte and Touche. Including your board packages were details surrounding two invoices we received from Deloitte associated with the work that they did in 2005, 2006, or the year-end work that they performed for that year. The Audit Committee met and discussed these bills in detail, and the committee seeks a motion from the floor for the following recommendations. One, that we pay $10,197 on the invoice for the district related to inefficiencies. This amount reflects 103 hours at a contract rate of $99 per hour. Secondly, that we pay Deloitte and Touche $13,860 on the invoice for the fixed asset restatement work. This amount reflects 140 hours at $99 per hour. Third, that we provide a letter from the board to Deloitte, which clearly states that any bill submitted to the district must fully comply with contractual terms to be considered for payment. I would like to make a motion that these two bills be paid with a letter as described from the board.
Please, sir, a second. Second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I will direct a clerk to prepare the appropriate letter for my signature.
Finally, Mr. President, I want to thank the superintendent, his staff, particularly Jim Coney and his staff, Ms. Wheeler, our auditor general, and the members of the Audit Committee. We intend to convene another meeting in August of 2007, and that, folks, will be informed of the date of that meeting as it arrives. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the board reports. We'll move on then to, excuse me, to the consideration of resolutions, and I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 1 through 38. So moved. And second, any questions regarding any of those resolutions? All in favor for approval of resolutions 1 through 38, please say aye. Aye.
I vote aye, but I abstain on number 17 due to a family member.
I vote, I abstain, I vote aye, but I abstain from number 17 as well for the same reason. The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 39 and 40, educational facilities. So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any questions? All in favor of approval of resolution 39 and 40, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motions to approve resolutions 41 and 42, procurement and supply. So moved.
So moved.
It's been properly moved and second. Any questions regarding those resolutions?
I'll just make a quick comment and thank staff for this great chart that we have here titled "Informational Statistics," which tells us whether or not it's a city firm, whether or not it's an MWBE firm. whether or not it's an MWBE firm or a subcontract. It is extremely helpful, and I hope that we continue to do this going forward.
Commissioner Thompson?
And I wonder, thank you, I appreciate the chart also. Is it possible to break out whether or not it's a woman versus whether it's a minority? Because right now, it's all kind of glumped together, minority and women. If it wouldn't expand it too much, it would be a problem. That would be helpful to see. Thank you.
Fine. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 43 and 44, IT and information technology.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. I'm going to segregate resolutions 45 through 59. I mean, I'm just, I'm going to segregate 60 through 63. So I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 45 through 59.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then I'm going to have the resolution 60 through 63 individually. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 60.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and second. Any questions regarding resolution number 60? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion, the ayes have it, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 61.
So moved.
It's been moved and second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Entertain a resolution to approve resolution number, a motion to approve resolution number 62.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any question? All in favor, please say aye.
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 I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 63.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 I, the reason that I segregated those was that initially, there were some differences of opinion, but I guess there are none now, so those resolutions passed. I don't think we have any unfinished business, so we'll move on then to new business. On the new business, there have been three items submitted by Commissioner Brennan. Commissioner Brennan, you want to take the lead in presenting those items?
That was included, I think, in my report from the Policy Committee?
Yes. You want to discuss them in any order, or you want me to just?
Or invite staff to discuss them. Cell phone policy. That policy was needed to better administer the distribution of cell phones.
You want to invite what staff to discuss them?
The staff that presented them at the Policy Committee.
Perhaps respond to questions.
Yes.
I have one question, Commissioner Brennan. How are we currently monitoring the appropriate use of cell phones?
I think that that was, that the purpose of the policy is that we were not.
There's no mechanism in place, no procedure in place, you think?
Not that, not that was satisfactory according to the staff. I would invite the people who presented those policy changes to the committee, if they would want to speak to these, I think they could speak to them better than I could.
Well, here's the way it works, Commissioner Brennan. We will ask Dr. Calla to explain the policy, and if he cannot, then he can call on whomever he likes.
That would be, they'll be fine. Ford.
While he's coming to the podium, what would be helpful for me to know is what is current, what is being proposed and what it's intended to address that was lacking.
Go for it, Ford.
Commissioner, would you elucidate on your requirement for what controls or, I mean, I can explain what we're doing now.
Well, that would be helpful if you can just very briefly, really very briefly, tell me what monitoring procedure is currently in place and what proposed changes are being made that are intended to address whatever's lacking.
Well, I'll let someone else speak to the proposed changes, but what we do right now is, first of all, I negotiated a fixed-price contract with Verizon. I felt that the old model of, you know, sending people individual bills with individual calls and trying to administer that, first of all, it's a tremendous burden on my staff, and it's really not very effective. So our practice right now is that we have a fixed cost for voice-only, and we have a fixed cost for the PDAs or the personal digital assistance that some people do have, such as BlackBerrys. I do have my staff monitor for things such as picture downloads, ringtone downloads, things that are really clearly outside the bounds of the district's business, and we do charge back and require them to pay for those types of things. So that is monitored on a monthly basis whenever we get the, whenever we get the bill.
May I continue, Commissioner Brennan?
Certainly. I'm a little confused. I'm not running me, you're asking me for permission to?
Well, I thought you were leading the discussion.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Thompson.
Whomever is the authority, if I might continue with another question.
That would not be me.
And I was reading something about, it's supposed to be used for official district business only, no personal use. We currently have a process in place to monitor personal versus official district business use?
That was the part, Commissioner, that was really very difficult to administer. And I felt that, two things. Number one, by having unlimited usage for a reasonable and fixed price of $31 a month unlimited, it really obviated the need to really get down into charging people for a dollar here and a dollar there. And in my estimation, the cost of the staff to administer that to several hundred cell phones was not worth it.
And so the fixed price means that if someone exceeds a certain dollar amount, then they're on their own, or how does that work?
No, it's unlimited.
Unlimited, you did say that.
Yep.
Okay.
No, my interest was in protecting the district's financial investment, and by negotiating a fixed-price contract with Verizon and not having to really do any discreet line item monitoring, I felt that we were offering the best opportunity. I guess it should be noted also that our cellphone use is, in fact, irritable, which means that we get reimbursed for 88 cents on the dollar for every dollar we spend on cell phones.
Thank you.
President?
Commissioner Evans?
How many folks in the district currently have cell phones?
I think the number is 168.
And how is it determined whether or not they have, they, who gets them?
Yeah. I, oh, you want to get there, okay.
I'll just answer that, because Ford was more in the part of the contract, and I worked with Don Rita in doing the policy. First of all, we did not have a policy in place on cellphone and did not have administrative regulations. So Don Rita and I felt that we should have a policy in place, and that was the initial initiative of putting the policy together. It does speak to who has phones and for what purposes. We limit our phones for the purpose of conducting business and also to be available in the case of emergencies in the district. For example, we give each principal a phone. We give them a text and a voice phone so that they can be reachable 24 hours, seven days a week, in the event of emergencies. Other people who don't have to have that kind of access by title will simply get a voice phone to conduct district business. And the policy and administrative regulations that will accompany this policy clearly delineates what titles, not necessarily people, but what titles will have either text and voice or just voice, and for what purpose. We also put into the policy and will be in administrative regulations our ongoing monitoring of the use of that telephone, not only the distribution as well as the collection of phones when people change positions and their new position doesn't necessarily require them to have that phone. Very frankly, over the last two years, there's been an increase in the number of requests for phones, and this particular policy and administrative regulations that go with that will limit the distribution of those cell phones, voice and data phones. I'd like to also say that we entered into a partnership with ASAR, the Administrators' Union. They actually purchased the telephones for their members, for their principals, as a kind of a partnership, and then we pay the monthly fee for the phone.
Go ahead.
I imagine we've already voted on the contract that you worked out for the unlimited use. What was the dollar amount of that, do you recall?
The, it was not to exceed, Commissioner, and I do not remember the amount.
If you could provide that after the season meeting, thank you.
President Garcia?
Commissioner Brennan?
A quick question with respect to this, and I'm not sure if the point was made clearly or not, and that is that prior to this change, the school district personnel had, in different departments, had multiple contracts with multiple vendors for cellphone service, correct?
That's correct.
The idea here is that by increasing the volume under one vendor, there are savings to be.
Absolutely.
Realized.
Commissioner Powell?
One of the discussion points during the Policy Committee can be found on the first page of the regulation. In the table, it still has "to be determined" listed as to whether board members should have cell phones and/or should be issued cell phones. And it was discussed in the Policy Committee that we ought to poll members of the board to find out how the board themselves feel about that and provide that as input to the superintendent and his staff so that they can complete this table. I will articulate my position out loud, and that doesn't mean everybody else has to, but we do receive a salary in excess of $22,000. No other school board in our county receives a stipend of any kind. I think that the very least we can do is arrange for our own personal portable communication if, in fact, we don't already have that at our disposal through our other employment. That's my personal opinion, but my point is that the staff needs feedback from all of us as board members so that they can make a determination.
Commissioner Thompson?
What's the expectation for when that conversation will be held amongst board members? Are we going to have an actual formal discussion, or do you want us to weigh in individually?
You can weigh in individually now. I mean, I don't think a discussion is necessary.
You mean, a formal gathering is not necessary?
No, I mean, if the board wishes, we can do that right now and give the staff their information so they can move on.
My thinking is that it's worthy of consideration. I know the service that I have, my personal cellphone, I get better rates after 9:00 PM, but I don't know how able I am to conduct a lot of business after 9:00 PM, board business, so.
Speak for yourself, Commissioner Thompson.
So I wind up spending, and I couldn't give you a dollar amount, but I'm sure I spend a significant amount of time during the day discussing board business. And so even though we receive a salary, I think one of the reasons is because it's commensurate, if you will, with the work we do in this particular district, given the size and the issues in the business that we handle. So I think I would certainly be in favor of considering it rather than voting it down straight out.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Commissioner White?
Off the cuff, I can tell you, it wouldn't make any difference to me. I have to have a cellphone 24/7 anyways. I got kids and clients, and there's just no way around that. So I don't feel I need.
Yes or no?
No, I do not need a district issued.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell? You said no. Commissioner Evans?
I don't think we need cell phones, but I know sometimes Verizon may give some type of discount to other things. Board members may be able to benefit from that, for that matter. So that could be, I think that could be a, maybe a middle of the road. If a board member didn't have a cellphone, or they wanted to get a cellphone just for district use, maybe they can get a discount from Verizon's being part of the.
You're eligible for that discount at this time.
So you're, no, you don't need a cellphone?
No, and I try not to talk any district business on cell phones.
Commissioner Brennan?
Thank you, President Garcia. The only speech I know about this subject is 45 minutes long. Is that a problem? Never mind. No, I don't, I'll buy my own. If indeed I want to have a cellphone, I'll buy my own, certainly.
I don't need a cellphone. So you have your information. Let's move on then, if we finish with the cellphone policy. One question before, Mr. Robinson, before you leave, is this exemption to be determined? What is that? On the last page here, for cellphone exceptions request on the development?
Acknowledgement? Some kind of?
Which page, Commissioner?
The very back.
Last page.
The very back. All the way to the back.
Yes. We are working now on a process which members, staff members can actually request an exception to the determination now in terms of whether they get a phone by title. For example, if by title of a director, you don't get a cellphone, but in your particular position as a director, if it requires you to be out of the office 60% of the time, 70% of the time, then you can request issuance of a phone even though your position itself may not specifically call for it. And we're just developing in our administrative regulations a process for that exception.
Thank you. Any questions regarding to that?
What about the very back page? It's also under development. Is that continuation? No? The cellphone user acknowledgement, that's also under development.
That would also be resolved before the August meeting, I take it, right? Yes.
What does it mean?
It means they will, they will, they will make the final recommendations before the August meeting.
No, I mean, what is cellphone user acknowledgement? What is that?
It's like your internet use policy, that you have to sign that says you understand the rules.
Okay. All right.
Are we clear, Commissioner Thompson?
We are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the cellphone policy? Then we'll move on to the Code of Ethics, which is the next one, 2160. Commissioner Brennan?
Code of Ethics, 2160. This update is inclusive, I guess, of existing conflict of interest policy and school district officer and employee code of ethics policy. Does everybody have a copy?
Yes, we do.
Has everybody had an opportunity to look it over?
Yes, we have.
Would the staff that presented this to the Policy Committee want to come up and answer any questions anyone may have? Or should, I'm sorry, apologies.
Not a problem.
Thousand pardons.
Were there questions to be addressed?
I was fortunate enough to attend the meeting where you thoroughly explained it, so I don't have any questions.
Same here.
I think it's a great policy. I plan on voting for it next month.
So do I. No questions? Thank you, Don Rita.
Thank you, Don Rita. Thank you to the staff.
We'll move on to the next one, which is multicultural global education.
This follows up on a recommendation from the Quality Assurance Committee. Who's the chair that would be? Shirley, would you like to address that?
I'm happy to entertain questions from the board.
We responded to that. It's an interesting issue. You know, we've had it discussed both by guest speakers and among ourselves. The question, I guess, is whether or not, without taking this kind of step, we have a balanced and accurate presentation of history to our young people. That's really.
You said without taking this step, do we have a balanced and what?
We, whether, without taking the steps contemplated here, without having separate steps for beefing up, if you will, multicultural education, whether history as it has been taught without those kinds of provisions has been taught accurately. I think that's really the heart of the discussion. You can say, there are some people, you know, renowned people, Dr. Walter Cooper, one of them, I believe, who has misgivings about this approach. But, and the interesting thing about that, you know, he would, I think, make the case that a more, that history should be taught more holistically and not in a Balkanized fashion, if you will. that history should be taught more holistically and not in a Balkanized fashion, if you will. I think the counterargument is that, as a practical matter, the fact is that African-American history, Black history, certainly in America, has been lost straight or stolen, I think was the title of the Bill Cosby documentary about that 30 years ago. And we are all, I think, enriched and better informed if we have history that is accurate and inclusive, and I think this is a step to try to do that.
I agree, and just so we are all clear, even though we're talking about a department, an African-American Studies Department, the intent is to infuse our curriculum so that there is a more holistic approach to the delivery of not just history, but also science, mathematics, English. So we're looking to infuse across the curriculum what we're currently delivering so that we can, in fact, have a fuller and more accurate...
Let me ask you why...
Depiction of...
I'm sorry.
Sure, of the contributions and the experiences of everyone.
Let me ask you why African? Why put African and African-American?
The thinking, from my perspective, is because while there certainly is an African experience that has contributed to the African-American experience, they still are two separate experiences in some ways. So the African-American experience here in the United States in particular has been influenced by African culture.
Well, that may be so, but I don't think, but I don't think I need to study African history necessarily. I wouldn't mind studying African-American history.
I think that in order to understand African-American history, you have to understand African history because it's African history that brought African-Americans here. And, you know, whenever, I mean, just me growing up, learning about African-American history, before I even learned about African-American history, I learned about the ancient African history. Because if our kids understood that, I think that would give them a greater appreciation on who they really are and how they got to America and their experience. So I think that's why many departments, be it in a university, mostly in the university settings, it is usually titled African, African-American Studies.
Mr. President, I would also note in response to your question, you don't mind, and countless other people, thousands of people, don't mind learning about European history, right? We learn about Asian history and culture, African history, Caribbean history and culture. That's taught in schools and colleges throughout this country. So it is a distinct and unique experience, which is part of the African-American culture, as Commissioner Evans says, but it is something distinct and apart, just like the European history that's been studied for decades in our schools.
Well, I'm an African Puerto Rican, okay? And I don't study African Puerto Rican in the school system. I'm not necessarily opposed to this department, but I think we're kind of expanding it kind of wide. I mean, I understand, let's teach our kids the contributions that African-Americans have made. Let's teach them about African-American history in the United States, what contributions have they made to our historical development. But to take our kids and teach them African history and then force them to go through courses in African history, I think is a little bit too much. That's my opinion.
And again, just to clarify, no one is absolutely sure how this will unfold, but the thinking right now is that we're not talking separate distinct classes necessarily, but we're talking about infusing the curriculum with the African and African-American perspective. So that we're not talking about forcing students to go take a class in African history or African-American.
Mr. President, if I could add just one other comment that would get back on...
Yes, Commissioner White.
Commissioner Thompson's remarks, that we also have to remember that we have students in this community, in our schools, that are not African-American or Irish-American, but are African. We have teachers who are African, and white students and Italian students and Irish students would benefit from exposure to that culture as well. They are becoming a sizable part of our nation, our state, and even our city. And so I submit that just like African-Americans, we should learn more about Africans.
I guess I'm at near the age of Walter Cooper, and we kind of think alike about this policy, so I just leave it there.
Can I just add one last?
Any other question, Commissioner Evans?
I just wanted to add one last thing. And I think also when we look at this department, we shouldn't look at it just in the context of classes and history books. I see this department is also looking at issues affecting African-Americans in the community as a whole, and some of the problems that may come up, be it issues with black males or black females, approaches to learning around African-American children. I think that it goes beyond just the Crispus Attics, Malcolm X, Martin Luther King, and really also, that's important, but also it looks at the history and cultural aspects of trying to help solve or look at solving some of the issues around African-Americans in the community, being that the district is predominantly African-American and Latino.
One more, Commissioner Thompson?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Powell.
Powell, I'm sorry. I know one of you.
I just want to say that I appreciate what Shirley said about not having specific courses around African-American Studies, particularly in the high school where there are already requirements for four years of social studies instruction in order for students to pass with a region's diploma. At the high school level, there really isn't any more room for a new course when you consider what's already required of us by the state of New York. Coming down from the lofty principal discussion, I do note that the format of this policy lacks our usual cross-references and adoption dates. So I hope that between now and next month that it gets formatted for adoption, to include some of those editing-type issues, not just substance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment on this policy? Fine, then that will be referred back to committee for submission next month.
With the corrections, Commissioner Powell referenced, or...
The cross-references, the legal references, and the date of adoptions.
Okay.
That are usually footnotes at the bottom of the page.
President Garcia, could I just...
Yes, Lauta Kala.
Does this policy preclude the issues brought up by Malik about the clearinghouse issues, issues dealing with African-American issues that students face every day? Because this really seems to direct the curricular issues.
I'm glad you raised that question. I was trying to not lengthen the conversation anymore, but we are, even though it's understandable that the focus would primarily be and almost exclusively be on curriculum, we are talking about staff development, and we're talking about looking at African and African-American culture in terms of delivery of instruction, and that is going to be infused, I think, by deepening the knowledge and appreciation of the societal issues that affect African-Americans. So, no, it's not exclusively curriculum. It's, as it's fleshed out, I'm sure it's going to entail staff development and services so that we're not only deepening the knowledge and appreciation on the part of the students, but also the adults that'll be working in this area.
Thank you. I think we have completed, concluded our discussion. So we'll move on then to speakers.
I have a code of conduct in front of us. Do we not, is that not a discussion item?
Oh, we have the code of conduct, too? Ah, yes. We have an annual reauthorization of the policy 5300, the code of conduct, and everyone has received this in the mail. In fact, I thought we did this. We had not done this prior to now.
Okay.
There's, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and...
There might be, there might be one. We all have a copy of this. Mr. Louie is here, perhaps to answer any further questions we may have. There's one thing that I thought was worth mentioning. It was, the concern was raised at the Policy Committee meeting earlier in the week that perhaps having the public hearing in August might be an inopportune time inasmuch as it's, you know, people are on vacations, people are not in town, parents in particular are often, you know, that's a less opportune time for them to participate in that public hearing. And although in this instance, a public hearing will be scheduled for August, we might think about moving that. The counterargument, as I understand it, is that there's an annual requirement, and the question would be whether or not an annual, we would be in compliance if we were to, say, have this hearing in May, when parents, when the school year was still winding down and parents were still more engaged. Would that put us in non-compliance with the law, which I think requires an annual review, an annual public hearing?
Lauta Kala, the...
Yeah, historically, I've done this in July, which is also an inopportune time, but is simply, it is also because of that annual deadline. So I understand the difficulty, but we also want to be in compliance.
What would be the response, just hypothetically, if we were to hold it in May? Would the state, would there be a sanction? Would there be, would we subsequent to that be able to have the annual review in May in subsequent years?
Certainly, there'd be no objection prospectively. You do want now, this would be the seventh year in a row we've had this under the, under the SAVE legislation. The idea of having it at this time basically is to have at once the experience of the prior year, and at the other end, to have the information out to principals, to make sure that the pamphlets for students are available at the first day of school, that we can meet the requirement of programs for the students to explain the code at the beginning of the year and so forth. If we wanted to change the schedule, if the board wanted to change the schedule so that, for example, the code that would become effective for school year '08, '09 was taking place in May or March or January, there certainly is no reason that we could not do that.
But if we've always...
You would lose some of the, some, at least in the first year and the transition year, you'd lose some of the length of time of experience under the existing code.
We've been doing it in July for a long time, and I don't really see any need to expand it. Unless the board wants to change it, you know, we should just go ahead and reauthorize this policy. Commissioner Powell?
The reason that it became an issue was specifically that we had heard through the Policy Committee that there were parents who wanted to weigh in and that summer was problematic. Parents aren't focusing on schools, they're thinking about vacation, and that it's simply more parent-friendly to do it in May, for example, or have the hearing even as late as June, while parents are still 100% focused on their kid's education.
Is the material given to the principals in a booklet form, Mr. Louie?
The principals get material in several ways. I give them an annual letter that talks about any changes or updates that have been done in this process. They get copies, hard copies and electronic copies of the new code, and they get a supply of the pamphlet that is done for students and for any other parents who wish to pick them up so that they're available for the start of the school year. In addition, the code goes, as with other parts of the policy manual, go online, and in addition, some of the excerpts that are of more immediate concern to parents and students, the dress code issues and the summary of improper conduct, the expectation for parents, the expectation for students, and so forth, will also get published and appear in the school calendar.
So this document was presented to us for action. Is that correct, Commissioner Brennan?
That is correct.
So I'm just gonna...
I'm sorry, today is just discussion. We would vote on it after the hearing, if I understand.
That's not what I, that's not what I'm understanding.
Now, let me read the report, so it says, "A vote on these items could then be taken in August. These items will be included in my committee report and raised as discussion items under new business." That's what I said, that's what I said in my report.
So August will be when we vote on this?
August.
That's, I think that's correct.
Before we close the discussion, I do want to point out that there are some suggestions enclosed in this packet that Mr. Louie provided that come directly from some other parties within the organization, and he's recommending, notwithstanding those suggestions, that we not make changes. So I want to call that to your attention in case people haven't really absorbed the fact that we're talking about not changing, but simply reauthorizing as is.
There were no, there were no suggestions from administrative staff or from any union except the RTA. The Student Leadership Council did have suggestions that had to do with making the booklet that goes out more user-friendly, and the Department of Communications is working on achieving that. I did not recommend changes approved, suggested by the RTA. I did enclose both my reasons for not recommending and the raw materials that the RTA provided so that you can assess those yourself. Several of them were matters that really have to do with the balance of power between principals and the teachers in the schools, probably more appropriate for living contract and for collective bargaining negotiations. Others was a suggestion from the RTA for an outright ban of cellphones. There are about eight of them. I've listed them in my materials with comments by section, and I've given you the raw suggestions so that you can assess for yourself what view you take on any of those.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
I'm not sure if you can speak to this, but can someone tell me the process by which the bargaining units gather input from their members to shape whatever position they take around the code of conduct?
That I couldn't tell you. I send out an email to the various union presidents. This year, the first one went out in March, the second one went out in May, soliciting input. Some years I get some, some years I do not. The RTA has a contract provision that entitles them to have a meeting with me before I submit anything. So we did have that meeting. Three members of their officer corps came to my office with their written proposal. How those were generated, I'd have to defer to the RTA. I do not know.
I know some of this is outside the board's purview, but it's those kinds of questions that I'm interested in, what kinds of processes are in place so that we're sure what we're getting is...
I think...
Not just narrowing from a few people.
I think, Commissioner Thompson, you know, you may ask the union, as an elected official, you have a right to do that. I mean, you know, but we can't, we can't even mandate or...
I know, I know it's outside.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Louie.
Thank you. Just to further, that the Student Leadership Council had at least two meetings in which they had the subject on their agenda.
Thank you.
They still get it.
Yeah. They know. Get it. Right, you get it.
We'll move on then to the next item on the agenda that will be speakers on other than agenda items. Commissioner Evans, excuses himself because he has a pressing situation to deal with. I'll call you, please remember that you have three minutes to cover your subject, and I would ask you to comply with the time. The first speaker on the list here is Mr. Kerry Coleman, and then the next speaker will be Don Donahue. Mr. Coleman, are you present? He's not. So, Mr. Donahue, are you here?
No.
No. Valerie Johnson? You just get three.
I can't blame her for asking. I actually had thought about preparing something, but for some reason I feel it more necessary and more effective to be responsive to some of the dialogue that just took place amongst the board members that give an example of the issues that I continue to have with the processes of shared decision-making, aka school-based planning. Commissioner Thompson just asked some very poignant questions around the processes, around the feedback that was given into the code of conduct revisions, changes, or... the feedback that was given into the code of conduct revisions, changes, or whatever. And I went to the policy meeting and asked basically the same questions, and wanted to know, well, did Mr. Looby get input from the parents? And really pushed the hearing piece. Um, and it seems like that did not happen, and yet the code of conduct, I will repeat, is the one piece of, uh, school board policy that is interpreted, the interpretation of it can have a major impact on discipline in our schools, including third graders being arrested, sixth graders being suspended indefinitely, kindergarteners being long-term suspended, and all of these things culminate from an interpretation of the code of conduct policy. So it is imperative that parents have some say in real time, meaning when the school year is in, that this code of conduct needs to have, uh, parent input into it. And I say that to say, with school-based planning, I am clearly supportive of and have reiterated on several occasions, a bottom-up constituency representation for parents, meaning we actually have a structure within school buildings where we have elected parent representatives, whether it be PTA, PTO presidents, vice president, officers, and thus you get school-based planning team members who are elected right now. And from that level, you have a pool to get and solicit input, Michael Looby, and anyone else, from elected parents so that those elected parents can go back to their constituency or their constituency can go to them and expect to have some response and some answers from them. I say that after coming from a scantily put-together Parent Partnership Council meeting this evening, that is taking place at the same time that the board meeting is taking place, where there is no constituency representation at that table. I have a major concern also with the District Advisory Council to Title I, where there is supposed to be parent constituency representation, there is none. I propose to this board, and have spoken with the superintendent also, that clearly, where you have elected constituency representation, that is the foundation via V the school buildings, via V school-based planning teams, where you have the vehicles to have parent representatives representing parents, and not just people that you pick and designate as parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Yeah, I understand that Superintendent Cala is working with you on, on some of those issues, but definitely, I, I'm sure that all of us here agree with the comments you just made.
I, I'd also like to add that I have been working with Valerie and others on this, and, uh, we have scheduled meetings, I think even for later this week, and we will continue to get those ironed out. And as I have said repeatedly, uh, and I'm, I'm hoping that through our actions that we prove that, you know, our schools will not succeed without parents and without real parent involvement, and as Valerie says, not just parent involvement on paper.
Mr. Glennie Williams? Um, Ron Ring?
He's, he's coming.
Oh, Mr. Williams is coming, yes.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening out there. Hello? Uh, I won't waste a lot of time because Valerie covered, uh, the main points I want to talk about. Parent involvement is crucial for our district. Everybody says it, uh, Dr. Cala says it, for the last 10 years, we finally proved to the district that, uh, and across the state, across the country, that parent involvement is important, but it doesn't seem to get to be reality. And so I just want to make three points, and I, since Mr. Cala said he's working on it, I just want to hope he is. When we have this district-wide parent, uh, parent organization, when the election hasn't happened, that's a problem. When we have Title I parent, which is even federally put in place in law, and we don't have right elections, that's a problem. When we continue to have, for example, at Wilson High School, when the selection of principals was up, we had this big process where parents were involved in selection process, and we helped pick a person, and that person didn't even get dealt with. Somehow, that person, I, I hear, is going to be appointed to principal at Madison. We keep fighting out, every time we have an opportunity to participate in a decision-making process, our input gets no strength or little strength. By that I mean, you sort of listen to it or barely listen to it. All we're saying is, if you mean that parents, and let's say we know that parents are important, if you mean parents are important, then when we, when you have a process that says, here's your chance to input, uh, for example, the principal at Wilson, we participate, we get a candidate, then, and then it disappears into, in infinity, that's a problem. We need you to start, when you say you're going to listen to us, listen to us, and then make that input happen in the process of things. We get just so tired, tired, that every time we do what we're supposed to do, we look around and the results has no connection to the input we gave, as with Wilson, as with having no leadership right now over the district-wide parent leadership organization, as with having currently no leadership over Title I. We really need your leadership in this area, especially, I, I will point out, because it is my understanding that Malik is supposed to be the board person who's supposed to be trying to help make sure his parent effort happens. I'm asking Mr. Malik in particular, please, Mr. Malik, make this happen, make elections happen. Let me, one final last thing. The key with us, at least the key with me, and I, and I think most of us will say, is if you want a parent representative, we're getting tired of somehow parent representatives appearing, being picked by principals or people we don't even know who picked them. We think if you want parent representatives, just like when the teachers' unions say there's a teacher union representative, who picks them? The teachers pick them. When the administrators say there's an administrative representative in some situation, who picks them? The administrators pick them. Well, let me say, we have no less human rights. When their parents' representatives will be picked, we want you to start making sure parents pick those representation.
Thank you.
Uh, so thank you, and we're looking forward to you working with us and working together so that our kids can become what all they can be, and that is by you respecting the kind of human rights that we're all talking about. When you want representatives from us, then we get to pick them, and please come and help us work, not help us, work with us so we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ron Ring? Ms. Carrie Rames?
Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Cala, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the president and co-founder of the Rochester Fund for Educational Accountability. We're part of a growing national movement of fiercely independent parents, taxpayers, writers, and researchers who care very much about educational justice, and we're working outside school systems to create public pressure for school accountability and sustainable reform. Some of you may remember me from the February 2006 board meeting where I and a number of school-based planning team parents spoke of dysfunction on school-based planning teams. We reported district interference with parents' rights to elect their own school-based planning team reps, school improvement planning and evaluation that excluded parents, backroom staff hiring, professional development that was not aligned with student needs, measured nor properly expensed. If you recall after my remarks, Superintendent Rivera and each of you on the board paused to make firm statements about your commitment to accountability, to transparency, and public participation in our schools, promising to investigate these parent complaints and make changes to safeguard parent rights in the future. Well, I'm back, and it's not to give a sunny report that these systemic issues underlying the problems have been addressed over this last year and a half, quite the contrary. But more alarming than the administration's promise and failure to correct these accountability problems is its concerted effort to deny and conceal them. Last year's parent activism around school-based planning team reform coincided with the state-mandated review of each district's compliance with Commissioner's regs 100.11, mandating parent involvement in decision-making. This biennial review, as it's called, was the perfect opportunity to reflect on any barriers to parent or teacher participation and make those necessary improvements to school-based planning policy implementation. The perfect opportunity for reflection and change if the district was really interested in either. Instead, the School-Based Planning Team Steering Committee, one of many district committees dominated by Rochester's unions and superintendents' employee group, opted to ignore these parent complaints of barriers to involvement and instead give itself a near-perfect evaluation. The committee removed the sole parent committee member who dissented from the self-serving evaluation, replacing him with another parent leader, who also raised serious problems with school-based planning that were also ignored. Rather than conceding any problems with shared decision-making on the record, the district never submitted the evaluation to stay dead, defying Commissioner's regs. What's more, when our organization inquired into the status of this evaluation in January of this year, district officials supplied us with questionable documents, giving the false impression that all was well with school-based planning in this district, that all stakeholders were consulted in the review of the policy, and all agreed to this near-perfect score. The Information Office even presented us with a board resolution document approving this biennial review. If you check the board record, you will find that you never approved this document. Thank you.
Do you have a statement in written form that you can let the clerk have a copy?
Uh, well, it's a little messy. I can email it to you. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I just make a comment.
Uh, that's- Dr. Cala?
Uh, and I am aware of the issues, have been made aware of the issues over the last couple of weeks, and have, uh, been, uh, actively working on these issues, and in fact, with the school-based, uh, the district-wide school-based planning team, we've had a meeting, uh, about 10 days ago, I think, uh, and all of these issues were brought up at that meeting, and we are, are working on plans to address every one of those issues.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia? Point of personal privilege?
Yes, Commissioner Power.
I, I just want to make a statement that, um, in 1992, 1993, when I was a new parent to this district, I experienced exactly what is being described here, um, and it, uh, it pains me to hear that nothing has changed in all of these years, notwithstanding the efforts of this board back in 1999, 2000, to develop a parent involvement policy that had more teeth than the preceding parent involvement policy. Um, I, I would be, like very much to be involved in any future, um, investigation and documentation. I'm particularly concerned to, as to when the most recent training of school-based planning teams was, and what the actual status is of PTAs and PTOs across the district. As you'll recall, the parent involvement policy requires that schools that do not have active PTA, PTOs, it's the responsibility of the principal of each school to recruit and, and nurture just such organizations so that there will be a parent base from which to draw representatives from, and I, I haven't seen anything in recent years that told us the status of PTAs, PTOs, and whether they're healthy organizations or nominal organizations. I'm very much concerned about that.
Commissioner Thompson?
QA and I thought the full board, we've actually received information about the school-based planning team composition, because that was a concern that was raised, and we requested documentation showing us what the status was of the school-based planning teams. But whether you're asking for documentation on school-based planning, or PTA, or PTO, or whatever, it's got to go beyond that, because folks can put the names on paper, and there are various ways that the names wind up on paper, either election by parents or selection by principals or some other means, but we have to keep challenging ourselves to go beyond that, and, and we haven't gotten over that hurdle to breathe real life into these documents and these policies, and we've got to have someone in the administration helping to lead that.
Commissioner White?
Oh, no comment.
Brandon? Uh, the next board meeting will be August 16, 2007, at 6:30 PM. If you need additional information, you may go to the district website, wwwrcsdk12.org. Um, I'll enter then a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.
Hey, the clerk?
I've seen it out. I've seen it out. Call.[1499.32]
No, okay.
Brennan. The next board meeting will be August 16, 2007, at 6:30 p.m. If you need additional information, you may go to the district website, www.rcsdk-12.org. I'll enter in a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.